Alright, it's four o'clock. We're gonna call or order our County Mercy Communication District. We order first, we work through that hopefully later. Quickly. So, welcome all of our guests. Ms. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Owens here. Mr. Hendricks here. Mr. Hill?
Here.
We have the full court. We have no one to ask to speak on this particular meeting. So, we will look at approving the minutes.
I'd like to vote.
I'll start it.
Any discussions?
Yeah. The, uh, the, at the bottom of the court, it says, "Mr. Hendricks states, we need to do something," all of that changed. And, I'm just reading what's there.
You don't want to amend it for the EMA?
Yeah. Okay, what next to the last paragraph I should say is that Mr. Hendricks states, "We need to do something about the weather side by next month." He states he wants them to cut down in his district of District 3. Those statements were sort of garbled up and then what I said. But she's already changed, but you see this thing here.
Okay. So...
I made the changes. Yeah, I made the changes. They're in the book and they're also, like, I'll post them, you know, in the comments.
So, they get copied and they're everybody. So, all of them in. List, which is already there.
Okay. So, there is a motion, and you have, they, you've asked that they be amended at the end to reflect what you're ready.
Yeah.
And you could, who's second? You can say.
I'm going with that.
Everybody else? Alright, we're going to vote. All in favor, say aye. No, she cares. Uh, report from staff.
Okay, so I gave you all the monthly commission report for October. So, our call volume went up slightly. We had twenty-one hundred and eight calls that we answered just for October. And we issued sixteen addresses. We only had one weather event in October, which was a breezy morning. We did not activate the EOC at all. And the activities we worked on were just a social media update, some reports, the validations to LEOs. We did have a very lengthy, um, plan that we had to create. And so, that was really what I based all of my time on for the month of October. It was due to the state, which has already been submitted. So, it was just a, just a training exercise plan. So, it is part of the EMPG application process. We had a drill, the Great Checkout Drill, that we went through with the building. We attended the NENA conference, the eighth through the twelfth. And we also attended, uh, the Divisional State EMA meeting in St. Therese County. We had three of our dispatchers, the EMP certified, which is just emergency medical dispatch. On the back of the page, I've just listed still the grants that we're holding out on and still working on. So, that's about it.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. For this, I mean, I don't know if she's in respect of the league, but all this looks sort of less than it is.
Yes, it is. Yeah, most of it was still some things that were left over from actually the old building. We had, um, county ID tickets that were red, not taken red, county ID tickets, and they're very, very, very long-term. Just, uh, that was long-term.
That's what they're asking me to do.
Yeah.
Nothing else.
We did not earn anything on the storm shelter grants or the generator.
Any other questions? Mr. Owens? No reports.
I'm paying first for people listening, William. I guess anybody else. I appreciate that.
Any other discussion, House? Yes?
I had a question from employee about, uh, we've gone through this calendar, but we've got an old resolution on the table that says that anybody breaking under us is not going to be here. It's just send an email or a text. And the question was, do we still do the emails and texts even though we got the calendar? Or it's definitely not that we did do a resolution on that. You're...
I mean, I think, uh...
Well, I think the calendars, you know, I think the calendars work out for everybody. And I think, you know, our department is, let's, you know, if they're not going to be here at this meeting or something like that, they just let us know. Just because we might not know, you know, you or me or one of us might not look at the calendar. My calendar comes up every time I get an email. I click on it, so I pretty much know what's going on. Everybody's doing the, the business up here.
So, the clarify, we still do the button?
Yeah, just do it coming up.
That was just a question I had asked the lady.
Usually, I know everybody's been real, I mean, if you just, when you sign, now, I check all my emails on the ACCA, but the morning, first thing I hit on my calendar, just to see, especially if I come up here and I come to see Hendricks, almost happened. You know, she's running late or sick or whatever.
We just wanted to all be instructed to be doing it properly. I think most of us have done the calendar out for three nights. And so, I still carry, like, my extended vacation on Christmas is already on there.
Yeah.
Do y'all want me to still email you on that? Are you okay with that unless it's just an emergency that's not on the calendar?
My biggest thing is if we're having a meeting that day, and you know you're not going to be at that meeting, and you're sick or something like that, we need to know. If you update that calendar, you know, if it's like today, if everything is going on, you might not, you know, if we're trying to get our agenda together for today, we might not accidentally look down there and then we get here and we're looking for it. So, I just think, I think if it's, I mean, I like this, I like the calendar for sure. But I'm just saying, if it's something like today, you're not going to be, you don't get, just a reminder to us that you're not going to be at the meeting, so we'll know to carry over that. Or you got to shoot.
He knows, working with, I mean, with the pops.
Alright. Have you done the calendar yet? Do you quit, have you, have you got three emails?
I like mine.
Okay.
It's popped up on my phone.
The calendar, boy, we gotta, I mean, it takes...
And it probably is, I'm just going to be used to it. I'm just used to that email, I'll do that.
We'll get you some email.
Alright, everybody can clear on this. Ready to adjourn?
I'd like to watch it. I'll start it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unless you care. Alright, let us move on to our county commission meeting. We'll call our county commission for order. We'll welcome in all of our guests. Want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Hendricks and Mr. Owens on being re-elected. This will be your fourth time and your third. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Um...
There was a quiver.
Roll call. Ms. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Sir.
Mr. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
All are present at the court this time. I would please leave this to the flag. Mr. Hill, we need to send a prayer. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty as its justice for all.
That's right. Father in heaven, we thank you for another day you have given us here, and we thank you for life and all, for any blessings we thank you. So much for your love and your grace over, and we, we are not worth it. And Father, we go into our meeting, we pray, and ask that anything that comes here today be pleaded to you in Christ's name, and ask these things. Amen.
Amen. This, this meeting follows, you know, plus the election every two years. This is what Sarah means, our meeting dates for the next coming year. But usually, we get our photos made. So, probably next month, we all, you know, we turn that into ACCA. So, do y'all know, have y'all met them on that?
Well, they changed after since we didn't have to change in control.
No, no, probably that and just get photos.
Yeah.
That'd be a problem.
Y'all agree with that? I think my thoughts are that. I look skinnier out there.
Yeah, and I asked Ms. Kyle, she says she wasn't taking it. Oh.
I'm glad I held that younger, you know.
I think that, I think that would not change, but I guess they thought that texture they were using.
Yeah. If y'all agree with that, we can check ACCA and see about that.
You want one of us to call? I mean, we say something, if we don't say it, we won't call and check somebody. It won't get done. I just want these ladies to know that they're instructed to do something, that they know what they're instructed to do.
Why don't, why don't I do that?
Okay.
Is that what you say?
Yeah, yeah, you can do that. I'm just saying, I'm just saying we can do it.
Yeah. I, you know, I should mention something I just thought everybody had all talked about. You can't sue, right?
That's right.
We have Ms. Joy Jefferson-Frank to come and speak to you this afternoon concerning County Road 81. Ms. Frank?
It's set off in the head three minutes.
Three minutes?
If I think my text, someone's been having head trauma.
Yeah.
Um, I am Joy Frank. I've got seven, ten and a half years in road construction. Um, my concern here is County Road 81. My reason that I'm concerned is my grandchildren ride the school bus on this road, and they have eighty-one acres on this property, that they are on this road all the time. The road was milled up. Am I correct, Mr. Sheriff, states the road was milled all up? Um, and I've got pictures, you know.
Yes, you want to, you want to pass those out? And I can help you.
Okay. This is the beginning of it. And it was unbelievable. And in dark, it was your person. Um, the thing is, so we milled it down, we come back, we put tar and gravel, put some mill material on the crown, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then put tar and gravel down. Then he comes back out, well, it's a while, but with the tar and gravel, the hill goes back down. So, they're riding on this for a while. And so, one end of the road is like how we know, it's wide as how we know. The other end, and I know eighty-one goes on through back to the crossroads, but on the south end is the widest. And then where you cross over the river road there, it's only a one lane. So, the school, if anybody's coming up today, they have to get all the way off the road for the school bus to pass it. So, there's no variation there. I don't even know how you go to the center line. I have no clue. And Ryan wants to talk that they're going to scrot the center line. There's never been a scrot on it, ever. Never been a scrot. But this is a county road. I understand that. But now, they come back, supposedly scrape some of the center down, or try to get some of the rock back off, access rock. Now, we're back down, but we have dirt places everywhere, everywhere. Y'all know, anybody that's in construction knows that dirt. This winter, it's going to take any water, it's going to freeze and thaw, and then when spring comes, you're going to have a sponge there that's always pumping, that's wanting to be dug out. So, we're going to be building a new road. Um, I'm just saying, just, I don't even know why it was started if it couldn't be finished. It was a living mess. And now, this is after the drought, if you don't mind, this was after the scraping. Um, now, it is, they were supposed to scrape the center line, but I don't know who the operator was, or who was on the job to centerize, but it's like, they didn't scrape, they didn't get the access off the center. The motor breaker or whatever was just like zigzagging all the way down through there. Now, also, the entire time this construction was going on, our, the neighbors and everybody on this road, every afternoon picks up bags of garbage. Where these guys come out, they eat their lunch on the job, full of rocks beside the road, and I was a garbage. Everywhere. I'm more proud of my county than that, and, you know, I'm not asking for anybody to come up my road, because I don't want to be like this, and mine's terrible. But, you know, just taxpayers, that kind of gets the taxpayers, and people in my county that ask me to come and speak about this, just, it's just a swampy job. And I just think that we, as taxpayers and as commission, could do a better job at, even if you're going to attempt a job, it's just a mess. The trash is cleaned up, but the rest of it's still a mess. And then we're going to have a really big mess in winters over there. That's just one of the county roads that we're working on that's really bad. And I don't even know how that one got chosen. I have no idea. I don't know who the operator is on this, and they, it's ridiculous. Ridiculous. Now, Mr. Estes did tell me that he's going to bring a skid steer back out there and try to cover up the rock, through the dirt, right? With rock. And if we can get a good cover on that, where it's, where it's, you know, packed down, maybe we won't have any, any big issues. But dirt's like, anywhere you leave dirt, you're going to have, you're going to have problems. And it's all over that road. You know that, Mr. Estes, we're talking about it, it's awful. So, we're basically going to be building any road up there? Or not?
It just depends.
Yes, where they went through. It has my excess.
That was the last where they scraped the rock back down off of it.
We went down, we started, we started up there, just kind of pulled some of the excess rock off, and just get it, get it up, and with the best, it went down there on the Thursday evening, and it got started, and didn't get it.
Well, I could bend over after scraping it and it knocked down. I thought you normally waited until it just came off itself.
We, with our, with our chip spreader, we got a lot of excess trucking, do you think?
And it was a bit like that, can't get it like that. It was hot. But, I mean, there was some wet stuff.
The question, my question is, when the tar goes down and the gravel goes down on the tire, it's supposed to stick into the tar, I have no idea. So, you're just going to put tar back down on top of dirt? Like gravel back down on top of dirt?
Yeah.
What do you want?
If you say you're just going to come back and add more gravel, I understand what we're paying for, just tar and gravel.
If you go back down there now, it's going to work back across the road in those spots. You can't, you know.
There's still a bunch of dirt places, a lot of dirt places.
And a lot of the dirt, and I went down there, just correctly from wrong, but they go in there, in front of the shop or barn, and then there's a gate.
Uh-huh.
And when I got out and looked at that, best I could tell, it was material that had been brought out on the road, the tar was still underneath it. When you go on one road, before that dirt's been stopped out on the side of the road there, too, you can see a bunch of spots there, but it looked like it was spots of dirt, and it fell off.
Now, I went up where they were moving that dirt. I went over there, took some pictures. And just where it swept the gravel, just where the gravel had been pulled back off, there is actual dirt spots, there's not even any tar or anything on the base at all. I mean, and there's a lot, a lot.
So, that's kind of what happened on eighty, on, on eighty-two. You know, there's still some places on eighty-two that it didn't have.
Yeah.
That, that you don't have to go back and be...
So, our guys did this now?
Yeah.
Is some of theirs due to, uh, still not handling the way of physical electric to reduce, I mean, to put that?
That's my duty for the guy, it is.
But that, they're done, we're wasting too much gravel.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, we, because that, that chip spreader we got, you can't control the ground.
But you're getting another piece of equipment, didn't you?
Not chip spreader, that's the one that I asked about, it was three hundred and twenty-seven, twenty-four thousand dollars. What's for a new one? Um, there's some new ones out there, I follow some of them, but, yeah, a lot of this just kind of can't control the ground as far as the excess is not strong. So, we just keep my old guy.
How much, I mean, because we keep wasting this gravel.
Well, we, I'm going to say a really question, if I submit to get in a finisher's, we went around and all of us, we done, and we swept it, pulled it upside, like it up, took the dirt over there.
I think even the other end of eighty-one y'all swept it, because it's not as bad as the south end.
We knew that.
Okay.
And with tar and gravel, unless it's what, seventy, eighty, three, four days?
Right.
So, about all that we can do is, is go down there and keep gravel in these places until it's, uh...
Yeah, well, you just, I mean, that's what I'm saying, at least something, so that we can get some kind of sale, so that, you know, you know that, if the water goes down in there, we're going to have a sponge. It's just more money, tax dollars, that's going to be wasted after we do the whole road.
But I think, I think you have a conversation with the guys, bring your trash back home while they're running.
We've had that conversation.
Yeah, but something's got to be done, I think, because that is, I mean, I worked for the state for a lot of years, been a lot of nasty, nasty contractor, and we didn't leave our job without cleaning the mess up. It was unreal. And I wouldn't leave it like that. I mean, you can at least take your trash, get it back in your lifeboat, come on.
But now, as far as the road itself, once you tore it, it's really in better shape. Just you got to get back in there and clean out those spots.
Actually, it's better shape than it was, because it was...
Well, there was pothos, there was pothos.
Yeah, it was rough as a cop.
It was rough, because there was, so, a lot of pothos. But the pothos still wouldn't show the dirt. Now, it may be better right now, but I found the job's winter, because you got to have temperatures to be able to shoot, you know, the, the trick there. But by the end of winter, that road is not going to be even close to as good. Anytime you leave dirt, you're going to have issues.
So, you're not, you're not going to put a strap on it?
No.
No, no, no.
This is...
And then you sent, in my text, you sent me, we said you're just going to put a strap on it.
We were, yeah.
That was the show of Mr. Estes.
Eighty-one is not going to...
It's never going to show.
Okay. Because you put a strap on it, it ain't, it ain't built in for a while, it's going to have...
One of them's in, so, thank you.
Well, I just...
Appreciate you.
We have to take your photos.
Don't put straps on it.
We want your photos.
It's two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
He's getting some stairs.
Go, 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 picture one.
I'm not just trying to stay behind, you know, there's been a few minutes.
I think it's two years, I don't know, it's dry, I don't know. Pretty close to it.
We've got major scrapers, that's why we're not sure.
My road isn't that good shape.
Yeah, I bet.
And I'm straight, it is.
When you talk about it, you...
It's the same, sometimes the tires, they pull down, actually, and it's...
So, in other words, you're saying there's dirt on top of the tire?
Oh, yeah. It's some, it's some of the passengers, because there was, well, it is, there's a gate up there, and then it's just, it's sort of...
Yeah, they've got an extension cord across...
I think it was, it was in there for years, and when it carried, it was a good deal.
Very good product.
Cross the road? Yes.
Probably a good shot.
So, we didn't get the strap somewhere?
Really?
How would we start?
Well, now, she didn't, Erin didn't touch with you, she, Reds came and made it, she couldn't get in touch with you.
Well, she did, she did get in touch with me. But if anybody cannot get in touch with me, it's their fault, you know, a number of public and...
Right.
Anyway, the only way we can do better, we can get the spreader that we need, or we can just contract all the work out. And we, there won't be much out. Instead of doing four miles, we'll do maybe a half mile a year.
We'll be in position, and we got pushed to winter time, and then we, that road's going to get done with the company.
And I don't agree with the mercy of another company, because look what's happened on me on thirty-five. They had, we rushed to get the job done on thirty-five, guess what? They didn't come and do the work. We've got spots on thirty-five that's been chewed up, and that's major traffic, the school traffic. And now, the weather's just too cold. The company's not sure about that.
Well, their road was terrible to begin with, and it's in better shape now.
It looks like there's a lot of work on it.
So, see, there's, the time I quit, when I quit, though, so that spreader we got, you can't control the rate, there's one, one of them, and that's two of us. You can't control the width on that, it's ten foot wide, so you get on that road there, where it's only fourteen foot wide, you got to make a path down to here, and then that next path, you make, you didn't need but four or five foot, but you took four or five or four stone out, because you can't control it.
So, you lose a lot of stone.
So, you said, you said you was looking at some that's used, what about those?
They're there.
That much, right?
There's one...
Is it most of the new ones?
Half. Fifty, sixty thousand dollars. They're still good, they're still old. I mean, you can get used ones that, you know, are a lot better shape.
So, maybe if you're questioning us, why you're going around a tree?
They function.
Okay. Can you adjust it to set to, to...
That's what, all the function out there.
Recollect the stone, will they do that?
They will, that's why, they function like they're supposed to, they are all the pieces that they do.
But this is something that we can look at, there's not going to be no use for it until next spring, so this year, we give y'all four, five months to chew on it and figure out how we can get one, unless you want to come up with a good bill on one, or maybe keep a good eye out for one that would not stay.
So, I've got one that, I've got one that's looking at it for sixty thousand. I've got another one that a contractor's getting ready to get rid of, and I told him to call me when he got ready to get rid of it, so...
Please, thank you.
Probably about the same.
Yeah. And as it run on some, and just open, put the gravel in, and the spread, and open it out?
They got hot on the back, and they actually pulled trucks, trucks up to...
That's the one you got to come off the truck, I don't know.
No, it's got hot on it.
Okay.
Well, we just get one. And it's pretty.
That's, that's a lot of issue. We've got a whole lot of stone there, and like I said, we went through, we went through most of the roads, swept them, we gave them to the better roads, and topped a lot of better roads we responded to. So, we really have a basic stone, but in product, I will try to see what it becomes in the winter.
So, why do you use, put the stone, I mean, the car down with, is that big truck that is trucking?
Yeah.
And so, how, how thick is the, is the tar? Four inch?
Hmm, the biggest probably seven.
Then you drop the stone on top of it, so you really need about...
What's, what's the story on it?
So, you only really need is a, uh, an inch of gravel?
Oh, yeah, you want more rock, dude?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You don't look for my difference in coverage, I'm talking, or you should see, or...
That's what I thought, I'm going to need my difference in coverage.
When you, when you put that down, I think I sound, you know, you, you have a road to come back, don't you?
It passes into the door.
Tire, road, tire road.
You didn't style the wheel in the rubber tire?
I think what happened on eighty-two, it just didn't get enough of the tire to, to suck.
The thing was, the thing with the tar gravel, is it misses mirror image of what's in there. So, a lot of, a lot of eighty-two, that's the reason I like them, to try to do around that, because you end up with a nice surface for most part. You just go through the road and try to cover it, it just mirrors what's in there. There's a, there is a bit of the tar gravel, it don't fill in anything. So, like in eighty-two, some of that was, was a spot that we probably should have dug up the digs before, that we missed, did get to, or it was weak, and we just didn't see it, and that's where it's way on through.
Ninety-one, because we can do it, you know, it was up there a couple weeks ago, it Ninety one, because we can do it, you know, it was up there a couple of weeks ago, it was, knowing things was.
We did from eighty two to ninety one, did from eighty two to ninety one, around eighty one, so that's why, that's why I say it was like that.
Come on, correct us back to.
Okay.
Present it. Um, moving on to another three, Sheriff, if you have anything you need to discuss, any question? We have no awards presentation, so here's a consent in. Uh, all on, everything was initial, I'm like, what was it, I said?
I said.
I think Michelle wants to ask you. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent in?
The one thing that I wanted to ask Jason was to build, um, reorganization chart to go over that with Lee to make sure that everything's okay.
The re, I, I think it's concerning, the consent in? I imagine.
Very large.
Hundred six.
Hundred six.
Well, you have it.
Eighty two, property.
No, we didn't, we did not, uh. But all the positions are, the positions, all the positions that, that we had, it's just opening them back up and.
Giving away the.
Giving, giving away and opening them back up, it's all positions.
Renegating one position and adding to the other position.
But it's all job descriptions that we, they're already in the books, we just.
Changing numbers.
Change.
I mean, the amount, how's it gonna?
Yeah, just opening them up, yeah, changing the mouse that we have in that kind of stuff, didn't really create.
It is, cut it last month, we just cut it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, that it was clear.
I mean, it's all, it's all job descriptions that are already in the books, it's just positions that I didn't have on the order chart that I added to the order chart.
Okay.
It didn't raise any concerns for me when I read the consent agenda, because it appeared to be downgrading the position from our position. We hear the minutes of yield.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries? New business. Establish meeting dates. Whereas I've been code section eleven, three, eleven dash three, that's eight requires commission to establish regular meeting dates. During the first meeting in November following election, any of the members of the commission, now therefore be resolved at the Cleveland County Commission hereby sets a standard monthly meeting date for the day of each month at time. As usual, the meeting will be necessary and will be held. Each month, both meetings will be held at the Cleveland County Mount Center located at six seventy five one, I was in the, have them, and whoever makes the motion, you feel in those times. Anyone?
I said.
No, who made most?
I made it.
All right, Neil. All right, go ahead, how you want to lay it in?
That one will add, change it back to Monday.
Okay, well, you got?
Same time.
The first day, the first moment.
Second Monday will be the regular meeting.
Can I say something, Neil? Yes, sir.
I would like to see, uh, if we, how big would it be, would it be if we had the first Monday and then the third Monday?
At the workstation on the first Monday and waiting on the third Monday?
Reason why, there's so many things that we can get involved in, and, and, and to make it, I ain't saying easier, I think to make it go better and to make sure everybody has time to put our agenda together and bring everything together, because it sounds like always great, and then I think by facting that the Monday's gonna make it better, instead of Tuesday, because then you got weas, and you got Thursday Friday, you gotta get all this together, and then we're in the middle of payroll and in the middle of office, the ladies, you know, to make, I believe that everybody would agree. And I've been thinking about this, this first Monday and then the third Monday, instead of having bam bam, and that way it gives everybody time, we shouldn't have an old, and then that way it gives people to research, call our attorney, reach out to employees that were making changes before we give them more time to understand what's happening. So that's the only time to hire, I'd say, to be honest with that part.
It's fine.
What do y'all think, what do you think?
If we do this with nine on one, we just call it the same time. We didn't address it in the nine on one week, is that right? This one?
She.
It's fine.
I, I don't think it.
Legally, we have to do that one or just this one, I guess is my question.
We can just issue notice of the nine on one meeting being moved in December, and at the December meeting, you can adopt the schedule for the nine on one. You don't need to re-overs it today, we can just announce it prior to the December meeting, you can take care of that.
I just like your summary so much better, going from single row to five, so I can get it on.
Take it, Kristen.
Yes, sir.
So right now, it's the first Monday of each month, at what time for the agenda setting?
Work session.
Three o'clock?
That's what we're doing, the work session.
That's good, that boy that played us for a year and got.
Three P M.
The bull rush for that.
And, and when necessary, and will be, um, the third Monday?
Mm-hmm. And before thirty? Yes.
Well, the, this meeting be. This meeting, this meeting be five. So that read, uh, first Monday of each month at three P M would be agenda setting meetings? And, uh, I, I don't know, does that read exactly right? I don't know what to say. Now therefore be resolved, Cleveland County Commission hereby sets a standard monthly meeting date for the first Monday of each month at three P M.
Never, you gotta switch them. Standard monthly meeting is gonna be.
Yeah.
Third at five, or it's the agenda setting section on the first at three.
Yes, I see what you're saying, and I, I, I'm assuming opposite of that. So let's go back, I, I mean, I'll fix that up there. So now therefore be resolved, Cleveland County Commission, everybody, it's, um, hereby sets a standard monthly meeting date for the third Monday of each month at five P M. And agenda setting be, when necessary, be held at, will be held the first Monday of each month at three P M. Both meetings will be held at Cleveland County Mount Center. So that, yeah, that, that makes sense now, I do. So that's a motion, and you're good with that, we're gonna change it. Any discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries? Item D, whereas the county has received a coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund award under the American Rescue Plan Act, um, from the U.S. Department of Treasury, which in accordance with the final rule issued by the Treasury on January sixth, twenty twenty two, has been duly designated as revenue plus the funds. And whereas these COVID funds may be used for the purpose of providing government services, including support of water, sewer, infrastructure, and whereas the Cleveland County Commission has previously agreed to allocate a portion of its partner funds for the Cleveland County Water Project, whereas Roger Linderman, consultant for investing in Alabama counties, has provided an agreement for the county commission and Cleveland County Water Authority, as it may, um, the Cleveland County Water Authority has a subrecipient of funds. Now therefore be resolved, the Cleveland County Commission operates as Ryan Robertson, chairman, to sign the agreement on behalf of the commission.
I like the motion.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Or you want to change your name? This one, uh, uh, it's not correct. Yeah, no. What needs to be changed, of course?
Which has.
I thought you.
I thought you were gonna change, Lisa's, take Lisa's name off of it.
Well, at least right here, he says, I'm sorry. Right, they need to change her name.
Signature, so.
Yeah, she's not a signature lawyer, she'd be the kind of. That's good.
Ready to vote? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries? Whereas the Cleveland County Commission is concerned about the ongoing problem with school violence, whereas the commission has been approached by the Cleveland County Board of Education with a proposal to hire three school resource officers. Whereas the commission and its attorneys have been reviewing and adapting the memorandum of understanding that has been provided by Cleveland County School Board. Now therefore be resolved, the Cleveland County Commission has reviewed the memorandum of understanding in its entirety and agrees to initiate the hiring process of three school resource officers and operates its chairman, Ryan Robertson, to sign the memorandum of understanding.
I like the motion.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
I mean, is everybody happy with the money? Governor. I mean, we could screw it on the day. I mean, we're, we're gonna pay a hundred thousand, they're gonna pay sixty nine, and there's no, there's no formal in there for it to have a rate.
We're gonna tie those, you tell me how to do it.
You're gonna have to make a motion, and do a resolution, and that too, all that money's in the string. But that's another thing, I'm just talking about the contract right now. I mean, the way the contract written, that they're gonna pay sixty nine thousand dollars for five years, would salaries go up every year, insurance and all that? Are, are we good with this sixty nine thousand dollars?
We have thirty, we have thirty, thirty days.
So you wanna go back to the whole process, but why would this fix it to start with? It should be a form in there, print automatically, right, and every year, without having to go to, okay, we can cancel contract, and start all over, I mean, that's just crazy. But I mean, very technical.
Yes, sir. If, if I made the last version that I sent over to school board, asked them to change it to a one-year automatic renewal contract, this is what we got back, and I had a discussion with Commissioner Owen about changing it to three years. But again, with one, three, or five, I wasn't able to make any changes in the PDF file. But that's the only thing that appears to be a point of contention that, assuming so, I have to work out.
Well, I mean, there's a sentence in here which is really the way to send it to me. Parties agree that they may change the amount of these payments, and that will not constitute a new agreement. But there's no point in there to change that, I mean, what, what, I mean, we just gonna send a email to them and say, hey, you want more, more money? I mean, it's like this business. I mean, I'm only one vote, I mean, everybody's happy with that, I mean, we're good to screw it, everybody's happy with it.
We haven't laid this too long, we're gonna move forward.
Any other discussion? Read, read your vote. All right, so let's make it clear when you vote, for me, make sure everybody knows. So we have, you're the most, you made the most, and you said it, Michelle, you're right, Michelle. All right, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so three, four.
Sorry, can I say this? Yes, sir, I oppose strictly on the money part, that I believe in the deep officer.
Okay. I'll put that, I'm gonna put that in there. Motion carries? Three, one. New business, whereas Cleveland County, yes, sir, can I, yes, sir.
Oh, according to this contract, like Laura said, it's just gonna be S S U T money. Okay, all that money's not appropriate, so before anything can extend, we gotta go back and change that resolution out. Because right now, there isn't a S S U T money, it's all appropriated or something.
I assume that resolution.
There is a resolution that we, we tied to, uh, I think it was.
I.
We did a resolution to pay the raises for the job evaluation and the remainder to go to salaries. Well, that's three hundred fifty thousand of it for the job evaluation, and we're only projected to take in three hundred ninety thousand, and that's just projection, I mean, whether the company is a number percent high or not, that's still a discussion. But before we can spend money, we gotta get money cleared up, right?
We just need to do a resolution, do we need to do that now, also, Jason, or do we need to?
We need to do it before such time as the individuals are hired.
Yeah, you can't spend the money until we do that.
Right.
That we just make an amendment on that resolution, uh, that.
Now, I mean, this is, this has been passed.
Yeah, and change it.
Now, but, but you could possibly add a, add a resolution untie the S U T money, I suppose.
Well, I mean, it's tied to the, the pay study increases that weren't even done, with the balance one of salary now. If you want to specifically designate that balance to these salaries.
But you have to amend that balance to go with.
I mean, the.
But, but you're, we're saying that we retire S U T money, uh.
For salaries.
With this also. So anything, we need to tie this up first, and then anything over will go towards the salaries and the raises that we gave, that we did that.
Well, you've already given the increases, so that, that's already done. If anything that's left would be tied to these salaries. So whatever basis, I think, uh, the, the number that me and Emily talked about today is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So you've got sixty nine thousand.
That's only if you can get a employee making seventeen dollar a night. If you move a employee, make it twenty, it's way more than that. Ain't that brutal?
Yes, but they, but they, they'll pump down the pay rate sixteen, and they'll either come in and pay or finish, and they will have that what they give, they're immune of money, but they shouldn't be able to be.
But if you transfer, if you transfer a deputy over to this, you're not gonna make a, take that, a deputy's gonna move over to the same rate of pay.
But I don't.
So it's a hundred fifty thousand, but sure that happens.
Sure, you're not, were you, or Ronnie, could you, um?
Sheriff, they're asking if you're, you're planning to use, move a deputy at his current pay over into that position, any?
Yeah, wonderful, that's a question, I think, one school resource officer, but I'm nowhere able to make it. Thank you, one on one, you've been bothering us other part.
But if you, but I guess too, if you look at it that way, if he moves, it's gonna be a pay scale sixteen dollars an hour for, to replace that deputy, correct?
That's too different, you got deputies, you got S R officers. I mean, we just passed a contract that we don't have any money, come on. I mean, that's not.
That's why we said we're gonna have to change.
Are you gonna, is there a D, so you untied, hold the D back in?
Has that money's high, and like, we're in, we're in a resolution.
Yeah, more than one.
I don't know, but it's more than that, too. Do a way with that as well.
There's some, there's many ones that have, you know, they want.
Oh.
Making bigger issue that, yes.
Well, I mean, it, it has to come from someone.
Yeah.
And so you've got the balance of the S S U T money that's in the general fund. If that's not sufficient to cover this contract, then either the contract gets terminated because of the availability of funds, or we said that the excess comes from the general fund.
You, you only tie it to that general, right? I'm all, I'm all that Jason is saying, yes, for.
Well, so it, it's basically, the S S U T money goes into the general fund, which you earmarked. And so far, earmarked it towards the pay study and the raises. That money is already spent, it's budgeted. The excess is what you said will go to salaries, which arguably, these are salaries, so that money can be tied to these salaries. It's not going to cover the total amount. So that is, this contract says the S S U T will be used to pay for these employees. You would need a resolution that says either we only pay for what we've got money for, or the excess will be covered from the general fund. So we need to find out from Emily how much money, or from Lisa, how much money that we have extra that's going towards salaries.
Protecting forty thousand, thirty nine thousand, which is not a couple sixty, uh, a hundred, it's gonna be at least a hundred thousand our part to arm up, at least.
And if we're, if we're expecting to have these positions advertised for and hired to start in January, you have between now and December meeting to fix this.
That's why I said we didn't ask, we did that, so we can amend something, uh, next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Did everybody do that?
I don't remember that. You just have to have the money, you have to have it done before any offers from anybody.
I, I would sort of ask that we do a way with the other resolution and start needing, so we make clean resolution and not all this pending crap.
Well, now, if I'm.
Remember the, the S S U T resolution, the earlier one?
Yeah.
That's what we can do with the center.
Yeah.
And it could be rescinded.
Instead of a meeting, and I don't wanna meet it, I just wanna start needing and, and do a way.
Rescind that, you, you can do either, whatever the goal of the commission is, but again, you can either amend or rescind and reissue.
Okay.
But you have to be now, December, make that decision.
All right, moving on to new business item D. Whereas Cleveland County Commission is aware that a number of weather sirens are no longer in working order and are obsolete due to availability of replaced parts. Whereas the ex, the expense of the county would be prohibited to replace weather sirens along with the fact that many parts are no longer available, and whereas Cleveland County Emergency Management Director was tasked with communicating with, with fire departments regarding the intention of each to repair and remove weather sirens. Whereas the majority of the fire departments opted for removal, now therefore be it resolved, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to have the obsolete and inoperative weather sirens. Cleveland County Commission agrees to have the obsolete and inoperative weather sirens chosen for you to be taken out at a cost of four hundred fifty dollars per unit. Said cost to come from.
And I was told that it was going to be the general fund. That change was made before the Senate, but it doesn't appear to be anywhere in this.
General fund, I understand most.
I'm like motion.
You want to say?
Sure.
General fund? Two second?
Aye.
Okay.
And just to understand, I don't know if it's not, I would say it's a minimum of three at a time. If y'all might want to make sure that's understandable, because he says he can, you know, take it down three at a time, not just go here or there, take it one down, because he's got to have three pieces of equipment to go do it.
You want to amend, you want to, you made your motion, do you want to add that for us?
Minimum of three at a time.
That's fine.
Okay.
That is, that's everything, yeah.
Chosen for removal, uh, removal taken in at a cost of four fifty per unit.
I would just say have the word removal, add three at a time.
Chosen for removal, three at a time.
Do you want to put a, not a cap on that, from your own stand? But it sounds like there's a bunch of them not going to be taken down, a bunch of them are. You don't have any. So you got three right there, or is that? Three? I got two.
Please commit your.
I have seven.
You got seven?
Um, so.
If they're all.
That's a total of twelve.
Is that what you understand, Chris?
Crystal, there's not any, and I'm just tricked up on it.
Okay. Yes, sir. We, I mean, we got, well, legal understands that we're not liable for, we want you to stay in that.
Well, when somebody comes in and, and comes in and he handles our business losses, and we, anything that we do around this building, if they work at the setup, they got to show proof of insurance, and I'll be in insurance. We're not taking any responsibility to get them on the ground.
No, not talking about that. I'm talking about the ones that stay up. That's one I'm sure that we're kept loose from.
When they were transferred to fire departments, they took ownership of that.
A long time ago.
And we're, no longer putting any money forward.
So you're happy to have her limit?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
We got it. I have a question, please. Can we go by, move the backwards? I have a question about the SRO and the money.
Oh, we can take it at the end.
Okay.
Okay. I have a question. I don't know about who's going to be in charge of this. And then we can answer.
It's not me.
We, I feel this. Okay. I mean, that's.
In issue.
Crystal.
Who I need to call, Crystal?
Crystal needs to speak.
Yes, Mary Crystal.
I have a receipt of property that before the sirens come down, the chief has to fill this, this paper out. So we need to get that taken care of before we schedule them to be taken down. So I will email this to you, but we need to list specifically of the chiefs that has said and locations, that this, we have to have this receipt of property. Jason's already approved it, we've already gone over it. We have to have this before they're taken down.
And that's simply just administrative ownership.
Okay. Just sit, sit in there, I can get mine set and build out.
So you're going to sit one out for each power, that's a difference, four numbers for lot numbers or whatever.
We'll sit one out per station.
It's got multiple lines if there's more sirens per station.
Well, the, well, these, uh, well, these, uh, that, uh, our chiefs, will they have that information? Or you need to put it on the ones in my district, and all they need to do is, is sign it over to us.
I'll have it filled out, I'll let you do the sign.
I just need to. That's all I got, any person, too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Read vote?
Yes.
All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business out of D. Whereas Cleveland County Commission desires that the engineering department implement vacation of a portion of County Road 408, and whereas the commission understands that procedures for doing so require public hearing and notification of officers affected by the vacation. Now therefore, being resolved that the commission directs the county engineer to advertise this schedule of public hearing to be held during the December 2022 regular scheduled commissioning for the purpose of vacating a portion of County Road 408. Mr. Kyle?
I'll say.
Mr. Hendricks, any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
First, I think Lee is going to give the direct line. It will not interfere with Mr. Owens' property whatsoever, correct?
Yeah, it will not, not affect his access. He does travel the property line. Once it makes that name, it returns, it's not going to affect what we may change.
Aye?
Aye.
Yeah. Or.
This one included, I don't know.
It's on there all day, except for the. There's, there's money.
Hey, did you get that proposal or that note of evidence or EMA?
That?
You know, I thought I wrote a copy of that, kind of set to a bill, it was no problem.
I do not.
Hey, just stay on pace, just stay on pace. Come on.
There's not enough of any resolution.
Okay, I know that, though.
New business out of D. Whereas Cleveland County Commission authorizes an employee hourly rate increase reflecting a plan obtained through a comprehensive pay study. Whereas between the day that the commission's resolution authorizes an increase in the date of implementation, Cleveland County Sheriff requested an additional amount be added to certain sheriff's department employees' hourly pay. Whereas the increase was added to the amount of the initial adjustment due to the pay study without the knowledge of our approvals of the commission. Whereas the unauthorized portion of the increase was applied to those employees' hourly, hourly payroll pay rate for the first paycheck in April twenty twenty-two and continued into the last paycheck of September twenty twenty-two, at which time it was initially halted to prevent additional improper payments. Whereas the unauthorized portion of the affected employees' pay must be recouped by the Cleveland County Commission. Methods of recoupment to be selected by each employee including the following: a lump sum withholding from the employee's regular pay, withholding at a rate that the employee authorizes not to exceed the level, repayment over the course of six months, repayment using a leave, cash-out, vacation, or comp time, any combination of the options listed in one, three above. Now therefore, being resolved by the Cleveland County Commission that any and all amounts paid in sheriff's department employees as a result of the sheriff's unauthorized increase in certain salaries must be recouped from the affected employees authorized method of recoupment or set forth here and above to be exercised at the option of each individual employee. Mr. Motion? Motion by Mr. Owens, second. And Miss Kyle, any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
You aye, you're aye, Miss Kyle? You're aye, Mr. Hill?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Owens, two? Motion carries. Whereas this is G. Whereas the pay study plan received from Congress, Congress and Associates and authorized by the Cleveland County Commission did not include any provision for uncertified sheriff's department deputies. Whereas there have been uncertified officers hired by the sheriff's department since the study took place. Whereas the commission is aware that there should be a pay difference between uncertified officers and certified officers. Now therefore, being resolved that Cleveland County Commission authorizes a pay grade step change from pay grade sixteen, step A, to pay grade sixteen, step B, when the officer becomes certified, or if a certified officer is hired, he will begin in pay grade sixteen, step B. Make a motion, take it.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? I'd like to say to conclude that, huh, everything. Now, you have questions?
I'd like to direct this at, at the sheriff. If, uh, if we delay the money for those SRO positions until next month, that then will affect you hiring.
We would not be able to hire employees to get the money allocated, but he can advertise for them. Because he's got to go through that process.
You have any to start, I'll be here.
You don't have to.
And not wait a month.
Especially.
I think, why is the new debt for the guy, it, it got over Captain Kenny. I don't know. What did, what's that says on that, I don't get, whatever it's on, it would be, uh, we got one, one, take him off the road and put him in school. So anyway, I've no debt for him, no one debt to shore. So I don't know. Well, I'm just thinking, if you delay and murder mine, you know, school's going to be out of money, so.
Well, well, I mean, we also looking at, we're also looking at, you have Thanksgiving holidays coming up, and you have long Christmas holiday coming up. So, I mean, you're not, Ron will say, well, you're not going to have any days working.
Talking with Chad, and he understands that you're going, or.
You're talking about super ticket, right?
Yeah, Chad. He understands that, you know, for me and him talking in detail about how long it takes us to get a certified deputy. What he did say, that he would have an understanding, uh, that he, he knows there's going to be windows where there's not. But what he did say is that if you've got somebody at, at Pleasant Grove, and in the middle of the day, at least go out to the trade school. In other words, if you've got one deputy, he might, and, you know, if they somewhere out sick, we got, you know, during the holidays, you got a lot to deal with. I mean, with all the stuff that's on the road, to be one short on the road. The only thing he was saying was that he understand that, that if the deputies at Pleasant Grove, and they're there half a day, they might make a run by the trade school, or vice versa, but, you know, sort of mix up their time, or maybe they might go to the trade school early in the morning. But I think a lot of times at our graduate schools, we've, in the morning times, when you, it seems like you have more activity, where they're going to have a bigger issue to be at that school. But he is understanding that at times, there's going to be a deputy, you know, a deputy short, to where you might have to, you know, at least go out and check on the school and keep a protocol with each school.
Yeah, right. And then when they, in that area, drop off school.
Yeah, and they do. I've seen them there, three, four times. I've seen them out at the trade school.
Right, and to the chairman's point, there are basically about three to three and a half weeks left before the end of the calendar year.
Yeah.
And getting the money issue squared away, in the meantime, advertise for the other positions. Don't make the hires until we've got the money issue squared away, and hopefully we'll have certified folks that are able to put in place in January.
For portion staff, I think we had a, kind of instructor notes. I think everybody may have seen those. Calendar is being created through outlook, and can be used by instructor staff and department head. I am currently working with the sheriff's department on contract for vehicle maintenance. This could be sent to Jason from the edit. We recently got a problem with a check presented against one of our bank accounts. The bank account called this issue, it's kind of the bank called this issue. Due to increasing, Metro Bank is working with our account on a positive pay system, meaning we will be required to send a file to them when we write any checks. The file will contain information such as the vendor, check number, and check amount. I just wanted to wish you were ready that this didn't work. I emailed Jason about this also, but in relation to the recruitment resolution, starting with payment, the employee doesn't specify the methods, like in the letter to each employee, by due date giving, the payback will be taken back as a lump sum.
If I can hear this, I, I can speak for.
Okay.
All right, I did respond to her, my recommendation, was that the HR department designate the first full pay period in January, as to be when the recoupment will start, and that employees have to make their election at least seven days prior to the beginning of that first full January pay period. The reason for waiting to January is to not hit the employees during the Christmas holidays. Uh, I would also suggest that instead of being default to a lump sum, that default position be six months level payment. So again, if they don't make a choice, we're going with the least painful method, that is, if we even pay it over six months, so that will be the form, and we can put that in order to.
Request that the commission allow the mountain center closed at twelve p.m. on November twenty-third, the day of Thanksgiving. I think Supremes will make sure she had everybody's blessings.
She is trying to make sure.
Anybody you got? Upset, yeah. Y'all saw the letter through that, and I need some job description. Luke, you have anything?
I have a little bit.
Anybody have questions for Luke?
Sheriff?
Just one brief thing. I got a letter came in last week from, uh, basically Allen on the opioid litigation. Uh, the McKesson and Jansen settlements have had final reports entered by the special master. Uh, there is a period to object. Again, I don't recommend that we object to either of the proposed settlements. Uh, it's got a pretty definitely spelled out, uh, formula of how it's calculated. The McKesson, uh, payments are going to be made over ten years. The amount that Cleveland County will receive under McKesson is one hundred twenty-eight thousand five ninety-six twenty-two. So you would be receiving four thousand eight fifty-nine and sixty-two approximately every year for ten years under that settlement. Under the Jansen settlement, Cleveland County's net receipt will be sixty-three thousand one eighty-five twenty-nine. Uh, and subsequent to this letter being sent, um, it was noted that the attorney general has negotiated a settlement for the state of Alabama with Walmart. You may have seen in the news, the nationwide amount that Walmart has set aside, uh, for opioid litigation is three point one billion. Uh, we don't have the final number of what Alabama will receive regarding that, uh, but that isn't worked.
Um, we start with state and equity.
They've got, they're going to have to process any objections, and not have to go to the courts. I would imagine they have to proceed here.
Okay.
Is there any restrictions on that money?
It's, it's in the same document that was approved earlier, talking about, uh, being used for education, health expenses related to the crisis, et cetera. I don't have a spell that. What is the agreement?
Giving you for jail.
Potentially.
Yep.
The twenty-five thousand we got, the four, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eleven. We can never earmark that, and we need to go back and earmark that, too.
And don't recall, I'm not going to have any restrictions on her, but I know these two did.
I never asked Lisa to find out, because she said this was twice, I believe. But we need to go back and check on that, and we need to pass a resolution once we get out of this, before we can put that money to cover up.
Well, specifically wherein the budget, the money is going, yes. You had already approved the restrictions when you approved the settlement, right?
Right. So that's.
Could answer, could answer, jail.
Yeah, we got, we got to do, we don't need to do that.
That's all, yes, sir.
Any other questions? You have anything? No, I guess we have the old business? Any discussion, audience? Yes, sir.
Uh, I want to make sure everybody takes a look at these board appointments, and let's get them straightened out, because some of them have been updated since after you. Crystal put one there, I thought.
Ron? We have, uh, we don't want to get to our board. And I've got one. Uh, did, did I have two?
Sure.
I don't think anybody has. Mr. Hill says he has somebody to serve the A.T.R. board, and I'm, and I'm, I mean, he's spread out. It's hard to, is anybody have a problem? It's hard to do, is anybody have a problem handling? Does anyone?
Nope.
Do you wanna do that, come to me soon?
Do you have a vote, can you do it, John?
I think there is. It didn't, it didn't say anything on the agenda.
Yeah, it's shown on the.
But there was.
He got the way in the last couple of months. You guys show this, yeah?
I don't.
Okay.
There's three, right? Is that last one, what's his name? Or the board ladder?
They're gonna serve this on that board, or this right on there?
I have a question for the person.
You said you had some.
I have, I've got some money in mind, I would like to talk to him too. It's been showing, but it's always.
On that one, on the, on that last one, I think it's Willie.
It says that member, or is that name, I don't care, right?
Lisa was the, was the one that, that she still served in the media job hold.
Yeah.
As she has to go back to the department.
And what about Mary's? Yeah, and Mary said so too, right? So they're all covered.
They're all.
You got, you some about?
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
One, sort of point out to everybody, that we're hardly through our first quarter. And all this additional spending we're doing, we didn't put into budget, is going to come out of last year's carryover. It's, you know, it's not money that's, that looking at our budget is sustainable, we're going forward. We need to keep a close eye on that, I mean, we're only two months into the year, and we're always spending money that was left over money from the last couple of years, that might not show up next year. Then I got one more one. I have, uh. Been having some meetings with Tracy Lanning, and I have an opportunity for, uh, an animal service, a county animal service station to be put in my district. The deal, what we've worked out is, we need fifty thousand dollars. And I would like everybody to think about, or if everybody willing, we still got that money left over from the COVID. So that fifty thousand dollars I've had, and use it to purchase, to have purchase of the station, the property I'm willing.
Okay. Everybody consider, consider that? I mean, the, the, we needed, I mean, I'm making more than the north and three, because now Cleveland is, is took over Gordon's frames, they're not allowed to clean on.
The service unless they call them. So the start time, one of the mayor is, you know, thirty, thirty five minutes. So I'm, I'm so making more than the north.
I understand all that.
But that's the hospital, we're just gonna have to approve that.
Yeah.
And Nate, before you talk about the three, how much money was set aside, three hundred and something thousand?
Three hundred fifty thousand set aside, and fifty six thousand taken out for Tracy's little toy, and then seventy thousand taken out for. Wheel tractor, and a little over seventy thousand, double seven probably seven. What is that?
So what was the first one?
Two fifty six thousand.
Two twenty two, right?
Two twenty two.
That's not counted there up here.
So, uh, so in your district, so you spent your eighty seven thousand? I'd be saying, won't you?
Well, listen, I'm just gonna say this, I'll be happy to spend my money, but for these two, get their station, which I saw in the ten year plan, they don't have to look at their own money.
Um.
I understand that, that, you know.
Now, help me hang back up again, so I can get a word.
Oh, no, no, y'all, we need to play by the rules.
Well, my question was, Terry still got his eighty seven thousand dollars that we set aside. Uh, what about if if the county would be on board, we're taking twenty five of that money in twenty five year run, and you make the commission halfway on the census?
As long as the other two commissioners do the same thing.
Well, this might not be a conversation for twenty, while we're here, I'm just talking about your district. You like that?
Well, we got, we got two hundred and twenty sitting there, and why can't I get fifty? I mean.
Well, I thought we already, I thought we already split up most of that money, just split up.
No, no, that two hundred and twenty sitting there is not appropriate for me, by the way. They do all kinds of crap thrown out there, but there's nothing being voted on. There's two hundred and twenty something thousand dollars still sitting there, and that hope, out of the three fifty that was left over for projects. I consider this a lot.
And I think this could be done in all the districts.
Yeah, but the hospital board is putting way more in. If y'all don't know the details too, I ask that we go into the technical session, because this purchase of this property is still ongoing.
Yeah, that's.
And we need appropriate matter for executive session if you choose to.
I mean, if everybody wants to know everything that I discussed with the mayor and with Tracy, and then he, and my hospital board.
So, so if we take, uh, so how much would it be, about one seventy, or? I think, I think it's a, I think to get a animal service way out there, I think, I think it's for back up towards district, one and back down towards district. Where do you know?
I'm gonna go to the technical station, I would take. I'm not gonna say any road numbers, because I don't take a genius to figure out where it is.
I'm just saying, there's no way that it didn't mine, yeah, I'm not aware, you got Muskegon, Gordon's frames, Mars Hill.
We could use the dollar money.
There are thirty five minutes.
We can take, we can reappropriate it.
So once you get to fifty thousand, who's gonna make the name again, who's gonna pay that?
It was long.
So they have furnished the light bill, and the family, and everything, and then.
But I don't think the hospital board, they're not even, they haven't been that.
No, they, I have talked to a couple of hospitals, no, they have to, but they're gonna call emergency meeting once they get preliminary exceed from us. But my understanding is they're gonna call emergency meeting.
I'd have, I'd have to be in favor of it.
This is my one, this is what my business will, won't go long in the next month, anyway.
How about this? How about, I ask that we add a resolution, and let Tracy write the resolution, to take fifty thousand dollars from the project COVID money. To put towards a potential property purchase for the hospital board for a station in Grand River.
I don't want to hand. I think you just wrote it with the exception of instead of saying, put towards, earmarked for.
Okay.
But basically what you said is.
Okay, I make a bunch of.
But you're adding this to the agenda.
I wanna add to the agenda, then I wanna make a question.
We have a motion to add, uh, what you just explained, as far as a resolution. To the agenda, we have a second.
I'll say that.
Okay, discussion?
I'd like to say too, you know, if you use that money, it has to be billed with federal expense, you know, that's what we're gonna need to go back on everything, something like that.
I, I talked to. My name up there on key.
Yeah.
Down there, and she says there's no law.
She told us like that.
And she said, she said, she said they would be happy, she would be happy to write a resolution for us if we needed it.
Nice. So we're, let's, let's talk about, do you wanna add it to the agenda?
Okay.
We got, starting at, we have a motion, second, are you ready to vote to add it to the agenda? Tonight's agenda.
Looking to vote?
Yeah. Yeah, oh, I, I, she was looking at, looking at.
Cause she voted yes or no?
Why?
It's just probably out there, I mean, nobody even, I mean, you know, because we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to, I'm my district.
You read it?
There is gonna be people we can admit, because we already had problems with the animal services.
Okay, but get ready to vote, we have a.
Well, someone, someone.
To add, look, you're voting to add it right now.
Well, less added, you can discuss it after.
But if, if we don't, if it's not added, then it can be called in a work session, and then have to go through that decision.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. All in favor of adding this, say aye.
Alright.
Uh, no's in the post, not to add it.
No.
No. God, so.
Jeremy, you make the decision.
My goodness.
Too much, all the noise.
I'm gonna say don't, I'm, I'm gonna say don't add it right now.
When you're at the workshop?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have enough personnel, I mean, would we have to hire more E and P's?
That would be.
That would suit the hospital.
That would be hospital board. No, no, that's not.
We wouldn't put it down.
No, they, they, they're, they're working through the hospital board with the, with the formal tax for the hospital.
Okay. Motion to add it failed.
Yeah, it failed. Uh. Just cause not prepared to think about it.
Yeah.
Uh. Not that I don't think it's a good idea, I think it's a good idea.
I agree with you.
It fails.
If I didn't know that a week ago, I could have brought, I could have, or last month.
Yeah.
But the opportunity came along, and you're planning lined up, and now it's been a big degree.
Yeah.
So.
Well.
I say one more time.
If you guys, especially me, you know, I'll advertise.
Something as critical as that is, I think, I, I mean, I'd love to see one in Lawrence District. If you wanna take, can you take the eighty seven thousand and look at using fifty of that? And that way, if you got a deal that's firecracker ready, uh, there's no, there's no ties at all with that money. So something like that, I mean, I'm just giving an idea, so.
Well, the most in the cannons were hurting as far as the ankle, so.
So was he, was he referring to the stress area?
I could get it, this time.
I mean, I don't know, I, I really, we need one in every district, but you gotta start somewhere, and at least I put the work in and got a potential agreement in hand. I mean, then y'all wanna shoot it in the foot, I mean.
Well, Terry, no, I don't blame you for this, but they, County Wood, they have a place to.
I can't, I can't help but, I've been having meetings with the mayor out there, and with Tracy for the last three weeks. And discussing this, and he has been calling potential landowners and stuff, and the deal came together the end of last week. And, I mean. I'll spend my fifty thousand dollars, but also won't in that resolution saying that you're gonna come up with fifty, and he's gonna come up with fifty when it gets to our time, without pulling out a general fund.
I don't have a problem with that, because.
Well, where do you have to put up with fifty thousand dollars?
I don't know what I need to.
You may not.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, why would I need it, I could just get them to put a hand once, because they got the station. Okay.
You, you got a wish list, I got a deal.
No, I mean, I'm trying to get them to put a station at, at County Wood.
I wish we had a station that worked, I'm saying, ooh, I got this put together. And we're on five hour, y'all in store, or what is coming on?
But, but by the time I say Gary, I'm on this, I'm on that line too, I've got, I've got a place for them right now, if they would put animals up there.
You, you discussed it with all the person, you need to discuss it with.
Uh, no, I talked to Tracy about it.
Okay, well, I got a deal. I got a deal with Tracy, and he is gonna see if the hospital board agrees.
But now, you, you do have, you do have a funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a funding.
So you wanna do, put, put your discretion in there?
But you, you could do that, but you could at least make that promise, and then if you wanna come back and discuss this with the commission to change. Connect, but you still got time to do it and write it.
Oh, yeah, that's a problem anyway, but I would say, if I had to do that, I'm gonna look hard at a lot of those.
I'm, yeah, I think it'd be understood. We're seeing cat.
Yeah. Yeah, he's a tiger, ain't he?
He's got his own little house, so he must have a cat.
I tell you what, we don't have, what's that, no kind of problem with Chipmunks, that one right there, that's a good.
Discussion, any more discussion?
Uh, do we get this thing here on this contract, this agreement, something agreement, about the name, this name?
And this is a waterboard.
It'll either be the chairman has the point of contact, or someone that the.
I think it could be Mr.. You did it, wasn't it?
Somebody, they think.
Did that somebody stump it, or what?
It's just a point of contact.
That's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need to go.
I think, I mean, things understood, at least we can, and so it can be outside, can contact, or you, you can.
I'm getting.
It's not placed, we got.
Yes, right. Okay, I have a motion, chairman?
I got that. I got, I'm good.
You got more, what? I do too. Mr. Boy, Mr. Deal's got a question.
I've got a couple of things, to table that stroke, maybe, I could, I just wanna share it with me, but, but the commission be thinking about it.
Okay, Mr. Deal, Mr. Deal's got two things, a couple things?
One, one I have to do is the animal controller ordinance.
Animal control, by the way, I forgot to tell y'all, and y'all know that I was shocked when it passed this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah.
People were even trying to.
That's something we need to work on.
Yeah.
So, another thing is, I was approached and asked questions about a, um. Medical marijuana dispensary in county, you know, they caught me out, or, because I'm, I'm very, talk about it, don't. But we need to get wise, maybe later, you know? Because this, this time, a lot of the counties, especially the Luger County cities, they're, they're trying to hash it out, right?
Right. They are looking, there are, there are so many that they, the states are allowed, and they're looking for a place, and I know that they did contact the city head. So they're, in that situation, would the county even have a decision in that, if they go through the city head?
Uh, they would through the city head, and it's inside the city's corporate.
We, I don't know that we would have to say yay or nay, but. Yes, sir.
I, I know, I mean, I don't think we would either, if it's in city limits, but how about, uh. How about a campaign tax? Is that something you wanna talk about?
Can, and we can do that according to that?
I'm stacking it quick, I don't know.
You know, I went to that, in the summer conference, I went to that meeting, and about all that, and I know that there's gonna be. You know, I'm sure that all that's worked out, but I don't know if the county tax can be added, do you, do you know anything about that?
I think it's a bit more of a regulation.
Are you talking about on the transcript, uh, that one?
Mm-hmm.
If there's something need to reach out.
It does, like, wish it works to be a tax. It's a big one, the ones in, and then whatever at the hospital and school.
How, how does that work, does that work the same on, on prescription drugs? When you go buy a prescription, you're only the same kind of taxes, you would, you think. Is medical marijuana, though, is not the same as prescription? Hmm.
And what, they're gonna do like fourteen, fourteen stores, is that all?
Regular cell tanks, I don't know.
Fourteen stores across the state.
The total of twenty, well, there's twenty one facility licenses, different types of facilities, they've got processes.
This is gonna be like a regular store, isn't it?
Yeah, but there's not that many licenses being considered, and pretty much, three quarters of the counties have already passed resolutions.
Those applications, is there, they were supposed to be sent.
There's six hundred and seven applications that have been submitted.
That's why I'm just.
But, I understand this, but we, the city head could build a record name and a half, but the county can't?
You can, you have to pass a resolution with ordinance, uh. Currently, Heflin has not passed one, according to the, the commission.
What's the deadline, or is there a deadline?
Let's see.
It's December of this year. The.
Yeah, but if you wanna look at, getting the tax, it's something you gotta be in the worst. Yeah, but if you want to look at getting a tax, that's something that'd be in the worst. I still, I got another question, too, product animal control, and that deal did pass, but I think before we get, before the court, we need to figure out how that's gonna be, how you gonna handle that, who's gonna handle it under what authority and all that stuff, because if you can't, if you don't have anything behind the ordinance, the ordinance is no good. So. It's gonna take a lot of them, or it's gonna be a lot, for Jerry to.
Put together, that we sent to Montgomery, as far as the mobile home waters. Now, could we, I mean, we spent what, months on that, but now on that one, Lee does not, you're obviously staying on the mobile home.
We just, we just go check, see if it's there.
Inspection, and there's a little bit more to it.
A whole lot of that. Are you saying the limited home rule basically passed?
We did. We have. Would that be, you know. Yeah, that's right, and you know, we passed the resolution back, and, uh, so.
There's a very detailed process that has been followed, and I was ready two years ago, when it came out the last time, to hit the ground running and break you all on it, but I'll have to go back and work that one, before we can assess it.
How would you as fast as you can afford, decide on that?
That's, or I have to go the ordinance.
That'd be the first thing we need to, right?
Well, you have to enact the ordinance, but there's, basically what passed is giving you the authority to enact that ordinance. Now you have to go through the process to get it out.
I go back to the statement I made, boy, I do, too, you better keep an eye on the money. We're spending the money, but it's not projected to come in. Well, we, this passed, now the bugs are gonna be expected, something.
We have an issue with, coming since the day, too, Montgomery was trying to pass it, oh, we just gotta figure out how, how to regulate.
We gotta figure out, who's gonna visit in court. I'll get Lee. Jack.
Hey, yes, sir.
We just have one of these new deputies who are kind of, be on call, or something.
Hello, I've got a key, please. I would have got a price on the metal building, and, uh, I think I paid something hundred dollars, and the building is, uh, I think it's, no, that's a thousand dollars. So in our next week, we probably need to, we won't get that thing, but, uh, get that done, just.
Chris, what she can pull, they're using our opponent's property.
Well, that's, that's E M A, it's not.
I mean, well, that's what I'm saying, how they're eating away on it.
If she has any E M A money.
She's got a lot of them, it's pretty rare.
I know, but, uh, if she's got that much money, or where she put, but if you're talking about the money that she's got sold in nine-one-one, can't get used to.
No, for E M A, she has to wait before E M A.
Ten thousand, I don't know, big way, I would have had my budget.
She's only four thousand.
She said, she said she was, no, she said she was, I asked her, she said that, she was asking me, and I said, well, we could say that, but I think when Kim did the budget last time, she didn't carry it over.
We both can pray for a resolution.
Pray.
Or pray, yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm trying to get everything off my list before I leave the country, so.
Chairman, you have a motion, Mr. Holm, that's on the second.
Thank you. We have a motion on technical, you say?
I don't mind, but.
You got to say, I'll say aye.